It appears that we are now live on YouTube. So, welcome everyone to the sixth day of the public hearing. I'd like once again to start today by acknowledging that the town of Canmore is located within the Treaty 7 region of southern Alberta. And in the spirit of reconciliation, I acknowledge and appreciate that I live, work, and play in the traditional territories and home of the Yeh- Yehay Nakota nations, which includes the Bear's Paw, Wesley, and Chiniki bands. Also, the Blackfoot Confederacy, including the Sixtika, the Kainai, and Pikani. And as well, the Tutsina Nation and the Region 3 Meti Nation. At this time, I will call the public hearing back to order. And just as a refresher, or for those who haven't joined in in the past, the procedure for the day will be as follows. I'll invite members of the public who have registered to speak to do so in the order as provided me earlier this morning. I'll ask that people contain their remarks within the 10 minutes that are provided, and in a shorter time if that was their indication when registering. I would ask that speakers maintain a respectful approach in sharing their perspective with council. I'll ask speakers to share their name and whether or not they are residents of Canmore or have a home or business here. And the member of administration will advise the speaker of the nine-minute mark that they have one minute to conclude their comments. There may be questions from members of council for speakers, which would occur after the speaker has finished speaking. It's important that speakers address the details of the area structure plans that are in front of council for consideration. I'll ask that speakers refrain from commenting on the character or intent of the landowner or applicants, as that does not germane to these considerations. If necessary, I or another member of council will interrupt the speaker to ask that they maintain a respectful dialogue. There will be a short break taken each hour through the morning. And we are scheduled to finish this portion of the public hearing about noon. At that time, I'll call a recess in the public hearing until we reconvene to hear the rest of the agenda items, including questions from members of council for the applicant and closing comments from administration. And at the end of the public hearing, the municipal clerk will enter into the record the names of people who have provided written submissions. Written submissions and every submission received by the meeting adjournment will be noted in the meeting minutes and included in the record of public submissions. I will then give town administration an opportunity to provide closing comments and answer questions of council. And after that, I will adjourn the public hearing. The council may not accept any further formal submissions after the hearing closes. And with that, I'm looking to the speaker's list this morning. And in fact, I stand corrected. It appears that with the list of speakers that we have today, we should be wrapping it up about 11 o'clock this morning. Even better. So this time, I will ask Ms. Anne Brown to join in.
You interrupted me, Luke. Unbelievable. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for hearing me. First, I would like to say thank you to the indigenous peoples of this valley for sharing this beautiful place, and thanks to the lands and waters for being our home. My name is Anna Brown. My family and I have lived in the Bow Valley for 10 years, first moving to Canmore, then Banff, and now the MD of Big Corn. Specifically, I'm interested in the potential water resource impact from these proposed bylaws. In short, I don't see there will be enough water. I listened to the February 9th reading. I reviewed the related impact assessments and utility plans and backtracked to the town's 2016 utility management plan. There already appears to be serious potential restrictions to our licensed water availability from looking at the town's 2016 growth prediction and water needs forecast in section 2.6.1 of the utility management plan. I was disappointed to see the impact assessment for the area structure plans do not deal with this topic. The project as proposed would likely use all the remaining water in the town's water licenses, if not more. The issue is compounded by the fact that the town of Canmore has a hard limit for its future withdrawals. These cannot be expanded. I hope I have this wrong, and I would welcome to be corrected on my analysis. But that said, based on my review, I do not see sufficient evidence there will be sustainable water supply from the Bow River watershed to support the large developments proposed in the ASPs. We face decreasing water supply from our shrinking glaciers and increasing numbers of people in the valley who all need water. It is risky to assume there will be enough. Essentially, the current area structure plan bylaws use too much natural capital for the benefit of one property owner. Continuing to entertain these area structure plans, and even this process of planning, will limit the community's ability to manage growth in the face of our changing environment, nor will the area structure plans solve the community's housing challenges. It will unfortunately only get worse. And the risk from geologic failures is too great. I encourage council to produce a new sustainable water use plan incorporating a realistic outlook of flows from the Bow River in the face of a warmer climate. Use the results to set thresholds and inform growth management strategies in advance of considering any new area structure plans or large development proposals. Another thought is to purchase some or all of these lands and use a competitive bid method to acquire development proposals in much smaller steps that support our community's health and wellbeing, such as all builds in any new development meet net zero goals and are affordable housing, period. On a slight tangent, I suggest council review the recent case of sinkholes appearing in a development in the District of Seashell, BC, for context on geological risk forecasting. In closing, I offer some risk assessment thoughts from 30 years as an avalanche forecaster. Decision-making for low-probability, high-consequence risks is very difficult, and humans tend to do a poor job of this. A wider margin of safety is called for. Therefore, I respectfully request Mayor and Council reject the current area structure plan bylaws and go beyond this with further measures to ensure council and administration are well-supported with the right tools to manage growth in the face of a climate emergency. Thank you.
I thank you very much, Ms. Brown. I could stand to be corrected, but my understanding is that the town has adequate water license in place for, to meet the future projection of population of 30,000. But if I, if that turns out to be a misunderstanding on my part, we'll correct that with you. I'll leave you to turn.
Okay, I guess my understanding was that our current population in the utility management plan rested about 17,000. And my understanding of the full build-out of these two area structure plans is about 15,000. So, we would be skating what I would call pretty close to the threshold of what our water licenses in Canmore would provide for. And you should look carefully at how one of the wells operates. It's directly affected by the available flows in the Bow River, which means that on any given day, you're restricted by how much water is in the Bow River for how much you can take. And then, I guess my main point is that is it healthy and smart for a community consider giving all its remaining water resources to one developer? Yeah, I think I've said my case.
Well, I'll certainly make point of raising this question when council is asking questions of administration at the end of the public hearing.
Appreciate that, Anna. Please do correct me if I've got my analysis wrong. I would like that. Thank you.
Roger that. Are there questions from other members of council from Ms. Brown? Seeing none, thank you very much for taking the time to be with us this morning and share your perspective.
Thank you very much. Bye.
This time, I'll ask that Riley Lindberg join in.
Hi, everyone. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Fantastic. Before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge that we are on Treaty 7 territory, land that many First Nations, Meti, and Inuit have walked upon and nurtured for centuries. Mayor Boromann and members of the town council, thank you for hanging in there, guys. I know it's been a really long week, and so I just really appreciate you providing me with this opportunity to speak and voice my opposition of TSMV's two ASPs that I have read and deeply considered. My name is Riley Lindberg, and I'm a 27-year-old resident of Canmore, a former Town of Canmore Parks worker. And one day, I hope to be a father and raise my children in this beautiful community. To start off, I just want to say thank you. Say thank you, members of the town council, for your unanimous decision in 2019 to declare a climate emergency. With this brave decision, you took into consideration my future and the future of my children and grandchildren. And for that, I'm deeply grateful. However, as I sit here with all of you today, grappling with the most recent development proposal from TSMV, I'm distinctly aware that the future of my life, our community, and all future residents, once again depends on the decisions that you make. And so for that reason, town council, I wish to ask you, will you once again take into consideration the future of the environment, wildlife, and all generations to come by holding true to our current plans and bylaws? What has changed since these guiding documents were first approved or proposals from TSMV were denied? What justifies allowing a single land speculator to rewrite our fundamental plans and bylaws and ignore our self-declared climate emergency? If large-scale changes to these documents were to occur, in whose interest would those changes be made? My hope is that they'd be made and considered at length and made in the long-term interests of our beloved community, the wildlife around us, and our climate emergency. I cannot remain detached in the face of area structure plans that will so drastically affect the lives of my family, the environment around us, and all future generations to come. How could I? How could I if I stood in the shoes of a future Town of Canmore resident? Burdened by an uncontrollable climate emergency that was accentuated by the approval of TSMV's current ASPs? How could I if I held my infant child or grandchild in my arms to show them their town? Remembering all the while with grief in my heart, my town, a town that was forever altered by these ASPs? So, in 60 years, when I say my final goodbye to this town and pass it on to my children and grandchildren, what will that town look like? In this pivotal moment, what are we choosing to create together? And what town will be left behind? I can tell you what my hope is. My hope is that our town will be a leader, an inspiration to small towns across the globe for all that we've accomplished as a community. A town that did not settle for the status quo during the time of climate emergency, but instead emerged to lead the way in changing the future by raising the bar altogether. A community represented by this council that bravely adhered to its guiding documents in order to uphold its community ethic of environmental sensitivity and economic sustainability. A town that encourages community involvement and consults experts from around the globe. A town that plans for the future and strives to be a community of exemplary social, economic, and environmental equity. For in the end, it's in everyone's best interest to create and maintain a healthy, sustainable community. And today, in the context of a global climate emergency and the disappearance of viable ecosystems around the world, it is our responsibility to take into account the interests of the environment and wildlife with whom we share this beautiful place. If the current ASPs from TSMV are approved, I fear that they would dismantle any remaining hope for the future vision of our town I've described. Sadly, the future generations and wildlife most affected by the decisions we make on these ASPs have no voice in the matter. And so, with their interest in mind and a spirit of accountability, I implore you, our elected representatives, to stay the course in five ways. One, hold to our current urban growth boundary. Two, protect our current conservation of wildland zoning. Three, uphold the recreation and golf district zoning on the heavily undermined and unfinished golf course. Four, maintain the current number of allowable residential units as stated in bylaw 1-98. And five, use zoning to mitigate wildlife corridor pinch points that were recently approved by the province. Mayor Boromann and members of the town council, I trust that upon review of this public hearing and the most recent development proposal set forth by TSMV, that you will make another brave decision and honor the voices of those you represent and all future generations by holding the line and opposing TSMV's envisioned developments. I know that this is a very complex and difficult issue and decision, but I think that our community's voice, a voice that's held experts and locals from so many different backgrounds, has been absolutely apparent. And so, with gratitude and on behalf of my family, I thank you so much for your time and for listening to my perspective. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lindberg, for taking the time to join in this morning. I'm really happy to hear that you're thinking about your future family and the possibility of you raising your children here, as I did and many of the councillors have. In that context, I wonder if you've considered the impact of steadily increasing cost of housing here in Canmore and how that may ultimately force you and perhaps your kids to leave Canmore.
Yeah, I've thought about it a lot, actually, with a sad heart at times and with a pondering mind a lot of the time. And, you know, I'm very aware of what you've spoken to in terms of just the difficulty between municipal governments and our provincial government. And so I know all that, you know, you alluded to around inclusionary zoning as well, and I know how difficult that makes it. So I have been pondering all of this a lot. And, you know, I don't, I'm not an expert. I'm still young and beginning my life even as a young adult versus a father or a family member or homeowner yet. I'm lucky to be able to live here with my family in our home. But as I think towards the future, I don't think I have the answers. But what I would really love to see, and please let me know if this is available already, but what I would love to see is perhaps a committee or committees, task force, that include and involve people of my age demographic or those that are affected most by this. And we may not yet have the answers, but I think I would like the opportunity to find those answers and to look long and far for other communities that maybe have done an exemplary job of this or are leading the way, even though it's complex. Maybe there isn't exemplary, maybe there's just an optimal. And so I know we don't have much time here, and I won't yammer away at you too much, but that's what I'd love to see is just community involvement at every level. Yeah.
I will know the town of Canmore is considered a leader in mountain towns across Western North America for the work we've been doing in developing affordable housing through our housing corporation. So this has been in play for more than 20 years. And sure, there's a citizen, community-based board that manages that housing. I was just actually wondering if you'd considered the proposal within the area structure plans for affordable housing and whether or not those, the description of those affordable housing opportunities might meet your future needs as a resident and father.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. And please correct my knowledge if it's wrong in any way here. But my understanding is that, as you've spoken to before with inclusionary zoning and restrictions with the provinces, that it's through bonusing that so much of this can be done. And so, am I wrong to believe that it's possible that very little could be built to zero depending on what the builders choose? And if they choose to take advantage of those bonusing options or not? And if so, and I'll give you an opportunity to answer that. But if so, then I'm quite concerned because I don't know that there will be very much to any of that there if the builders don't choose to believe that that's in their best interest. So, I'm deeply concerned. And what I'd like to see going forward is, I just, I would like to see us as a town come up with a really comprehensive plan so that we are, we are speaking our message to TSMV or any other land speculator and, you know, pushing them with the power that we have to adhere as closely as possible to that versus us maybe accepting their proposals as they stand.
Okay, thanks for that considered answer.
No problem.
Are there other questions from members of council from Mr. Lindberg? Seeing none, thank you so much for taking the time to join with us this morning and share your perspective.
Thank you, everyone, and I just wish you the best of luck and appreciate all that you do for our town.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye. This time, I'll ask Judy Archer to join in.
Ms. Archer? Yes, I'm here. I'm just trying to start my video. Okay, I've already done that. Okay. Top of the morning to you, Mayor Boromann and councillors, and Happy St. Patty's Day. I'm guessing that when these hearings are over at the end of the day, you'll be dancing a happy jig. Thank you for your perseverance and for giving each of us time to voice our concerns and for your service to the community. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank all the citizens who've presented. I've been very impressed with the caliber of the presentations and the local experts we have, and I have learned a ton. And for this, I'm very grateful. My name's Judy Archer. I'm a permanent resident, and I've read both the ASPs, attended the first reading, and have reviewed many other documents and sources of information, trying to understand different perspectives. And I am opposed to both ASPs. The lands we're talking about are the traditional lands of the Stony Nakota, including the Chiniki Wesley and Bear's Paw First Nations, as well as the Nitsutzapi, the Tutsina, and the Tonaha, who all shared this valley before the arrival of the settlers, as well as Meti Region Number 3. I was happy to hear the four Stony Nakota men on the first day of the hearings. We do all share this valley as participants of Treaty 7, and it seems to me that this whole discussion is about how we share this valley. We're now six days into these hearings, and many issues have been raised. And there's too many issues in these ASPs to address in amendments. The issues are complicated and interconnected. Each is significant, and together, they add to a strong, strong reasons to turn down both the Three Sisters Village ASP and the Smith Creek ASP. My top concerns are the compromised wildlife corridor, the enormous scale, climate action, affordable, inclusive community, and also respectful consultation with the Stony Nakota. I was first introduced to the Three Sisters Mountain Village during the NRCB hearings in 1992. We've known for a long time about how special and how important this valley is for wildlife movement in the entire Y-to-Y region. And I'd say that the highest and best use of the land is the wildlife corridor, at least on that side of the valley, and maintaining biodiversity. I was disappointed last year when the province approved a wildlife corridor that's not based on the best current science, and even more disappointed when, to read that TSMV in their documents that they're not open to making further amendments to this inadequate provincially-approved wildlife corridor. In my opinion, TSMV would gain a huge amount of traction in the community if they would just go above and beyond to ensure the best possible wildlife corridor, rather than not even meeting the minimum. I'm not willing to risk ecological integrity and the ability of wildlife to freely pass through this continentally-significant corridor on a plan that's merely adequate and might work. The corridor must be defined, legally protected, which I understand is two years out, and we must have an extremely high level of confidence based on the best current science that it will meet the needs of wildlife before any more development is approved. It's incredible that we still have biodiversity and connectivity in this very busy valley, and we need to preserve this. I ask that we respect the urban growth boundary, keep the zoning of conservation and wildlife, maintain the unfinished golf course lands as setbacks to the hard-edged development, and that'll also help with the undermining risk. Add new zoning that will ensure maximum width, especially at the pinch points, and this will also help reduce the negative human wildlife encounters. TSMV notes that pressure on wildlife habitat comes not only from development and the width of the corridor, but also from the human use in the corridor. And this is very true. We do have to address this concern. However, right now, for these ASPs, corridor design, including width and pinch points, still needs to be addressed by both Three Sisters and the town. You've heard over and over that the scale of the development of these two ASPs is just too big. It needs to be scaled back significantly. The town does have the ability to do this and the opportunity to stand firm on significantly lower numbers. The Three Sisters Village ASP should be rejected simply based on the number of units that have been proposed. The scale of development and the wildlife corridors are directly related. Carsten Hoyer suggested where development at smaller scale might occur to facilitate successful sharing of the valley with humans and wildlife. We heard one of the Stony Nakota elders, and I believe it was Jackson Wesley, say, "Once it's gone, it's gone." And we can't let that happen. And we can't let that happen. Our changing climate is having an immense impact on our natural ecosystems. And we see this in fire and floods. We have heard others speak to these concerns. The two ASPs do acknowledge the need for climate action, but they don't go nearly farly far enough and actually impede the town's climate action plan. This most certainly is not acting as if we are truly in the state of a climate emergency. Both the town and TSMV have work to do towards climate action before any new ASPs can be considered. Bull Valley Climate Action has outlined some excellent recommendations and and I encourage the town to follow these. TSMV suggests density bonusing as a tool to address climate. I'm supportive of density because it is more energy efficient. It could potentially provide more affordable housing and it uses less land. However, I don't support TSMV's density bonusing system because the net result is the equivalent of two or three BAFTs, and this is just too much. The total residential units, including bonusing, needs to be kept at bylaw DC 198 maximum, which is three, four, four, seven units, but preferably significantly less. Again, the town has the ability to do this. Bonusing is also based on building better than the building code, which in Alberta is very weak. Even if the buildings were 20 to 90% better than Alberta's existing building code, it's still not as good as BC's current code. With the bonusing system, minimal climate gains result in more units, which defeats the gains. And especially if a lot of those units are not permanently lived in. TSMV also proposes to mitigate the undermining with cement and cementatious materials, something else I've learned about as a result of these ASPs. Cement production produces a significant amount of carbon, and this also goes against our climate action plan. I was very moved by the presentations of Adam Leonard, Dan Roycroft, and Avni Soma on affordability, inclusivity, and diversity. These two ASPs will not move Canmore in the direction that we need to go. There is there is no certainty of affordable housing. The bonusing system pits perpetually affordable housing or vital homes against climate action. And this doesn't do a good job of addressing either one. In conclusion, I can be supportive of small scale development that reduces the overall land footprint, that allows maximum habitat for wildlife, that reduces carbon emissions, and that honors quality of life and inclusivity for the human community. Three Sisters Mountain Village is a private business and is acting in their own best financial interests.
Excuse me, Ms. Archer. I know you're wrapping it up. This is your nine minute time check.
Thank you. We're looking to you, our council, and our town staff to act in the best interests of the citizens of Canmore. There are too many issues with each of these ASPs to address with amendments, so they should be rejected outright. I agree with Ruben Nelson and what others have said, that we have a wonderful opportunity here to engage our community, including the Stony Nakota, envisioning our future. This is an opportunity for Canada or for Canmore to demonstrate leadership in climate action, in human wildlife coexistence, and sustainability. I know we are considered leaders and I'd love to see this continue. We need to do this right and we need to do it better. If we can do it better. I've heard reference to the citizen engagement process from about 15 years ago called Mining the Future. It seems to me that the scale and issues in these proposed ASPs will undermine our future. What we really need to be doing, as Bart Robinson says, is minding our future. Please, Mayor Boromann and councillors, do not approve these ASPs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Archer, for joining in today. Are there any questions for members of council for Ms. Archer, Council McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor Boromann, and thank you, Ms. Archer, for coming to council to speak. I'm really pleased to hear that you support the climate action plan as well as density in our community. I was wondering, I'm not, I'm guessing that you might have had a chance to have a cursory look at our climate action plan. Do you see yourself as a resident within that plan? Like what steps you could take as an individual to be able to further that plan or to encourage your civic leaders to push that plan?
Well, I am actually also a part of Bull Valley Climate Action.
Okay.
And and so the, you know, citizen action, for sure, for people to be engaged and to be involved. And in our submission to you, we talked about that we need to do some, council needs to adjust the land use bylaws to more more align with the climate action plan and and work with town staff so that it does become a priority. I'd like to see climate, you know, a part of all the decisions that town makes. And certainly that includes the these ASPs and and the direction that we go as leaders with these ASPs. And I just don't think they go for enough. But certainly, as a citizen, I see myself as part of that plan. Absolutely.
And how you live. That's great. And I'm really happy to hear that you support density. I know that there's been some change because you're my neighbor. I don't know if you know that.
I do know that.
There's some change on our street over time, and there's been some proposals for density. And I don't think that you've been necessarily in favor of them. So it's nice to hear that these, I think this whole process has really educated us as a public as to maybe things that we didn't understand before, we understand now. But yeah, I'm grateful for you to come and speak to council and thank you for being open to questions.
Yeah, thank you. And I think the density specifically, if we can, if we can have more affordable housing in that density, that's that's awesome.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions from members of council, once again, Ms. Archer, thank you so much for taking the time to join council this morning and share your your perspective.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Jim Pisot to join in.
Good morning, Mayor Boromann, your worship and members of council. Can you hear me well enough?
Yes, you bet.
I want to thank you for this opportunity and for your incredible time and effort. Others have mentioned it as well, and I think it is extraordinary what you do on council on a day to day basis, and particularly during the last week. Yours is an incredible commitment, and please know how much my wife Valerie and I appreciate it. We join our neighbours in honouring the First Nations who have called these lands home for generations. And we look for ways to make this gesture meaningful. We have lived and worked in the Bull Valley and Canmore for more than 20 years. And we know that Canmore is not alone in being a desirable mountain community trying to address change. We know that Canmore will change, but we feel we should be the authors of that change, not the victims. Canmore is a unique leader in our efforts to secure harmony with the rest of nature. Mayor Boromann, you mentioned your discussions in Bozeman. And in my estimation, and I've looked into it quite deeply, Canmore is among the very best communities in the Rocky Mountains of North America in our efforts to live in harmony with wildlife. Rene Fowler and others have captured this earlier. We're also unique in our proximity to world renowned and world inspiring highway mitigations for wildlife in Bath National Park. So I feel, we feel that we can and should implement policies which continue the Bull Valley's leadership in these critical areas. I've read the ES ASPs and the EIS documents, and we have submitted submitted written comments regarding our list of concerns with these ASPs. Please know we oppose the ASPs as presented because, number one, there's little public appetite for acceptance. Number two, it is it is an unimaginable burden that council would take on the task of rewriting the documents. And that leaves only a third option, asking TSMV to go back to the drawing board. Council has done exactly this before, and we can do it again. And in fact, there is an ASP in place already. This morning, I would like to address two themes. Last week, Dr. Norbert Morgan Stern led us through an array of studies and recommendations and rulemaking regarding undermined lands in Alberta. He concluded urging us to take a look at the Sea Watch development in Seychelles, British Columbia. Since he called this an example of catastrophic, under catastrophic subsidence, I looked into it. Perhaps some of you did as well. We've heard one testimony referring to it this morning. What I found was chilling and yet another warning for us, for council, and for Three Sisters Mountain Village. At the Sea Watch development, subsidence has reduced an entire neighborhood of million dollar homes to damaged, abandoned, and threatened structures worth absolutely nothing. Absolutely nothing. The scenario you might be familiar. A neighborhood is proposed and laid out on a desirable piece of land. There is suspect and evidence of geologic instability. Engineering studies are done, permits, and process is gone through, and hopeful builders and buyers line up for their dream homes. Then disaster struck at Seychelles, one sinkhole at a time. Now, as lawyers fight it out, the entire neighborhood has been abandoned to looters and vandals. The B C Supreme Court recently said this is a ghost subdivision, a geotechnical disaster. So I ask, are we seeing the future of TSMV's undermined lands in this tragedy at Seychelles? I think there are two important parallels here that we should compare. First, at Seychelles and TSMV's undermined lands, particularly the golf course, there are known geological hazards that exist below lands considered for development. These hazards should not only give us pause, but they should block speculative development. And secondly, and perhaps most importantly, everybody in Seychelles, everybody at the Sea Watch development is blaming everybody else. The developer, the consulting engineers, local government, realtors, provincial government, and homeowners are all pointing fingers at each other. There is an endless denial of responsibility, an endless stream of litigation and cross accusations, and to date, a complete lack of equitable compensation for those who have lost their homes. Last August, the B C Supreme Court ruled that local government was not exempt from liability in this case, even though they had gone through all the proper procedures. Town administration might take some relief in the fact that the B C court said that the town planners could not be held individually responsible. I should note also that most insurers work to avoid or minimize the amount that they pay out. So just because engineers, Three Sisters, and the town have liability insurance, there's no guarantee to homeowners that those insurers will pay totally or promptly. Couple of days ago, Mr. John Martland outlined the legal pitfalls. And I think what we have developing these undermined lands, and I think what we see at Sea Watch in British Columbia puts meat on the bones of his outline. The area underneath Three Sisters is a geological nightmare, but it's also a lawyer's dream. So in context, I think that the undermined golf courses ought to be off the table from the outset. Three Sisters has been warned repeatedly, and there's no excuse to ignore those warnings. In that light, these undermined lands should not be used by Three Sisters as a bargaining chip should the town and TSMV engage in any future negotiations about these lands. We urge the town not to accept any TSMV arguments that they are going to give up development on the undermined golf course in exchange for new, some new considerations from the town. My second point, our second point, is that we find it unreasonable for the town to bind itself to a 30 year commitment as requested in these ASPs, while Three Sisters would be free to amend, delay, or even abandon their own commitments. So we have to look for forward to 300 years with our fingers crossed. Mr. Rod DeLeo and others have addressed the this question of certainty on one side and uncertainty on the other. Looking back for 30 years, we see that Three Sisters' history is littered with come and go, corporate and investor incarnations, with broken promises and with unmet commitments to develop commercial properties. History suggests that we might expect this same in the future. So should future fortunes change as they have in the past, TSMV will likely ask for extensions, exemptions, delays, and variances, and other reductions to their obligations under the ASP. Mr. Koenig referred to this process himself the other day. But so Three Sisters gets to change as circumstances change. But as we understand it, the town will be legally bound by its commitments if it approves the area structure plan. Certainty exists on one side, but certainty does not exist on the other. And should the wrong homes be built in the wrong places, adaptive management, it is changing as we learn new circumstances, is a hollow promise if structures are already built and habitat is irretrievably lost. We're not going to have a chance to unbuilt tomorrow if we build it wrong today. And so we feel that now is not the time to make irretrievable 30 year commitments on behalf of the town when we know.
Excuse me, Mr. Pisot. This is your nine minute time check.
Very well. Thank you. Now is not the time to make these irretrievable commitments when we know better, ought to know better, or simply not quite sure, particularly in light of the past. I want to thank you for this time, and I want to pose one quick question if I may. There was a question yesterday, the other day, when I believe Mr. Martland was testifying. And the question was, did he see any downside to the town refusing to permit the ASP? And Mayor Boromann, if I recall correctly, you suggested that that was not a proper topic at the time. But I'd like to raise up the parallel question. Have has the town or have any members of council received any communication from Three Sisters that could be interpreted as a threat should you not approve this area structure plan?
Not at all. Not at all, Mr.
Okay, thank you.
Hard no.
I appreciate that.
Is there, is that, have you concluded?
Yes, sir, I'm finished. Thank you, Rob. And I'll thank you again for your time and for your attention during all of these hearings.
Thank you very much for joining in today and sharing your perspective, Mr. Pisot. And at this time, I will ask Frank Lechak to join in.
Hi, is everybody there?
Yeah, everybody that I know is here.
Okay, hi. Thank you for the opportunity to to make this submission to council. Now, since submitting my presentation somewhat 13 days ago, I have ended up scribbling more and more notes, usually around four o'clock in the morning in bed. So while the the topic carriers are mostly the same, I did change my presentation somewhat, if you have it in front of you. And I will forward it to the municipal clerk if that's okay. So I speak in opposition to the two TSMV area structure plans under consideration by council. After reading both ASPs, the documentation before council and the public is considerable. At the historical decisions that go back some 30 years, and this matter becomes conflict, complex, and often confusing, even for people in the land use business. Ultimately, it's important that council examine the implications of these ASPs with a critical eye. And I believe council and administration will undertake a thorough review. Now, there's been a shifting original vision. In its simplest form, the 1992 NRCB decision report was a deal. Three Sisters Resorts gives the town a world class conference center, hotel, and resort amenities. And the town will give TSR about 6,000 residential units, all the while doing so in a safe and environmentally responsible manner. It's worthwhile to note, the decision report was entitled, "Application to Construct a Recreation and Tourism Project in the Town of Canmore." Please note the absence of the word residential, and that signaled. Please note the absence of the word residential and that signaled where the emphasis was intended to be, recreation and tourism. Any land development is full of risks, obviously, but the N R C B decision assumed such a proper resort would be viable and in the provincial interest. And it's important to note that it could occur if the town wanted it since Wind Valley was deleted. It seems this original dear deal morphed and decayed over three decades. Some history. In nineteen ninety-six, T S R presented the town with a large picture hung at the entrance of the then-town office, which is the senior center, featuring a proposed four hundred unit hotel conference center that aspired to the grandeur of the Banff Springs or the Rimrock Hotel. A prime intent was to take the economic chill off the shoulder seasons and boost the provincial and regional economy with a signature destination facility for all seasons. It would put Canmore on the global map. A year or so, T S R abandoned that in favor of a mining, mining themed village, complete with false front facades and scaled down individual hotels. Thereafter, the next proposal was a wellness center with boutique spas, but no conference center. Then came other A S Ps that have built residential. But really, how much commercial industrial was actually built in those thirty years? This performance alone should give council pause. I'd like to talk a little bit now about patient and not so patient money. So I have to ask, does council want a signature conference center hotel as originally envisioned way back when? Is there a way forward for more tourist tax revenue dollars on a more compact development site that can better corral visitors into defined activities, onto public transit to downtown? And that would better manage human wildlife conflict? Is council concerned about the dips in commercial business during the shoulder seasons? Has there even been a substantive community discussion on this concept? The Canmore Land Use Bylaw has the term convention facility as a permitted use in most of its commercial districts. But in D C Bylaw one ninety-eight, it is buried as an accessory use of a resort use. The Three Sisters A S P, this current one, makes no mention of a convention, a convention facility in its plans. To follow through with the original N R C B era five-star convention facility resort requires patient money with detailed planning and execution to finance and construct the non-residential facilities, build the marketing and take responsibility for a sustainable operation under changing circumstances. It requires a commitment that only comes with the availability of patient money. Deep-pocketed financiers with vision and the belief that Canmore is a great place for such a long-term investment. Instead, impatient money must gravitate to relatively quick turnover of residential lots while shifting long-term risk and operational costs to downstream builders and the community as a whole. Now, there's also been a, a flipping of the narrative from nineteen ninety-two. A destination hotel with major conference center facilities was intended to spark spin-off commercial uses in the same way a, a new N H L rink spawns an entertainment district or how a shopping mall requires anchor tenant to draw other tenants. What is being proposed in these two A S Ps is a stretched-out residential development with supporting commercial if and when the developer decides to subdivide and service land so others may or may not build. The village A S P is less of a Banff Springs hotel and more reminiscent of a Calgary McKenzie town for weekenders. This proposal, uh, proposed village land use concept flips the dynamic of a signature conference hotel as a driver of non-residential tax revenue and instead has become a residential development that first needs to be substantially built so as to generate enough demand for commercial uses that it might eventually bring the tax benefits craved by the town. I think that last point that I make is very important that you have to ask yourself. And there's an old adage, if you don't ask, you don't get. That adage appears to be the approach of the proposed A S Ps. Maximize developer opportunities and shuffle details to future adaptive management and third-party responsibility. It makes sense for the developer to ask for development on all the land. From a purely economic perspective, why not? However, once the town approves the A S Ps and once T S M V makes financial commitments, the ability for the town to remedy bad policy outcomes five or twenty years down the road becomes increasingly difficult and legally fraught. These A S Ps are out of scale with community values. Bylaw one ninety-eight provided a framework for another twenty-eight forty-seven residential units with another six hundred timeshare units that could be flipped to residential. The developer is asking for more than that. In addition, they are asking to add other lands into the M D P growth boundary not anticipated by the nineteen ninety-two N R C B decision. Affordable housing decisions have been downloaded to third-party builders who may or may not choose to build if there is less profit to do so. Provincial, provincially approved wildlife corridors are suspect and undermining liabilities remain well-founded concerns. The concerns go on and others have already spoken well on these matters, so I'll leave that alone. So what's council to do? Will the current proposals be of long-term benefit to the environment and the community? Will the community support these proposals? From what I've seen, not likely on either count. Some suggested approaches, first, start over. First, refuse the A S Ps at second reading. Do not try to amend or approve these A S Ps. The fundamental vision is wrong for Canmore and there are just too many issues to repair. The M G A requires council, counselors voting on bylaws to be present for the public hearing and this could force cap, this council to try and rush A S P approval before the next election in October twenty twenty-one. This matter may need to be parked and resolved by the next council. The prospect of resuming in-person broad-based consultation in twenty twenty-two is another reason to wait until the next council is elected and don't feel bad if, if you're not able to reach the finish line on this one. Uh, join the other seven councils that have tried and it's still going on. Secondly, be clear and detailed about what is acceptable. Instead of just reacting to Three Sisters proposals over and over again, the town needs to be clear and detailed about what the town wants to achieve on these lands and how it should be achieved. This would.
Is me, Frank? This is your nine minute time check.
Thank you, Robin. Lovely to hear your voice. This would include performance standards, minimums and maximums, as well as thinking through detailed implementation processes. Changes in provincial legislation to rethink wildlife corridors or encourage more affordable and greener housing is not on the horizon. So the town must ultimately negotiate with the landowner to achieve these objectives. It may require contracting outside consultants, but they will take direction from the town this time, not the developer. The town of Canmore's October twenty eighteen terms of reference for these two A S Ps contained five and a half pages of history and general topic areas to guide Three Sisters. Another six pages talked about the A S P approval process. This was inadequate and in, and an invitation for the landowner to overreach. I don't blame council or administration. They were just following the policies of the day in hopes that the developer would come back with something better than their last proposal. Moreover, terms of reference are not developed in a vacuum. There had to be discussions between the town and Three Sisters as to, as to what might be acceptable. So I have to ask, does bylaw one ninety-eight, the M D P growth boundary and the N R C B decision hard lines? Are hard, are they hard lines or are they negotiable? The nineteen ninety-eight settlement agreement was written up by the town, T S R lawyers after a knockdown, drag-out legal challenge that no one wanted to repeat. That was the template for drafting bylaw one ninety-eight, which had a public hearing and a lot of blowback by town residents before it was reformulated and finally approved as a guide for future development. Things have changed, so maybe twenty-three years later, is it time for a renewed conversation? Once in that new discussion, can you see residential numbers identified?
Mr. Lickzack, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, please, sir, last ten minutes.
As, as being reduced and commercial increased. Discussion opens new options and the talent has the last say. So finally, the last point is to undertake, undertake a proper engagement process. What does council have to lose? Canmore is a uniquely beautiful town with challenges and potential unlike anywhere else in Canada. Canmore deserves better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, the questions for members council for Mr. Lickzack. Seeing none, thanks very much for being here today to share your perspective.
Okay, bye.
This time I'll ask that Steve Skiba join in.
Steve has joined us by phone. I see he's unmuted, but uh, Steve, can you? Speak? I hear him dialing. Perhaps we can move on to Greg and give Steve a moment to.
Yes, let's do that. I'll ask that Greg Kotey join in.
Good morning, Mayor Borman and council. My name is Greg Kotey. Thank you for taking the time to hear from me today and for all your efforts to hear from everyone who wants to be heard. Special thanks to the town admin who tirelessly and seamlessly made this happen. Incredible thoughtful and expert independent presentations I have seen from members in our community has compelled me to consider how I may contribute with what I know. To start, I ask that you reject twenty twenty-one oh six now and forever and reject twenty twenty-one oh five and ask that it be redone to reflect the consistent and valid concerns expressed by independent experts and most everyone. I have developed a single-family and multi-residential realty in my career. I am not anti-development when it's done in a responsible manner and in a location that is not ecologically sensitive. I submit to you that these proposals are not responsible and are indeed planned in a critical environment. In two thousand and eight, my wife and I arrived in Canmore from Ontario for an expected one-year sabbatical from work. We wanted to learn how to ski and play in the mountains, but we fell in love with the community and so we never left. Setting roots here in the Bow Valley where we've resided for the past thirteen years. You could say that we came for the mountains, but stayed for the community and the friendships. Since that time, we've been active in volunteering and supporting local non-for-profit causes. My wife is a board member of Y to Y. And I had been a volunteer and a board member with a number of local and national organizations, including Cross Country Ski Canada, now Nordique Canada headquartered in Canmore. My background is in finance and restructuring businesses, including real estate, often involving managing competing interests, regulatory requirements, legal challenges, lawsuits, court actions, financial challenges and impacts on people. On behalf of our community, we'll be guiding change against competing interests and conflicting objectives. Change that once implemented cannot be reversed. We don't have the luxury of do-overs. So with that preamble, I want to discuss three matters. Firstly, my primary issues are reflected in the concerns expressed by many detailed presentations before me. Many from renowned experts regarding undermining the cost to our climate in terms of mine mitigation and empty second homes, inadequate wildlife corridors, the need for a more balanced tax base through stronger commitment to commercial development and opposition to the expansion of the growth boundary. We must weight heavily the independent experts who have no vested financial interests. The presentations by Jody Hilty, Carsten Howar and John Marriott come to mind. John's presentation about his on-the-ground experience tracking animals, showing the real-life impact of ill-considered corridors speaks volumes. Carsten informed us on the past and expected impacts on wildlife flows and science-based solutions to amend the development proposal. Dr. Hilty's presentation asks us to follow the science and mentions the lack of genuine engagement by the applicants in connection to wildlife corridors. She literally wrote the book on the science of connectivity. This is a siren call to all of us. As such, the A S Ps are not responsible development as I understand it and as I've tried to practice in my career. Secondly, the land under the development proposals is difficult to develop for the reasons listed above. I once took over a failed project east of Orange County in California after the original developer defaulted. The land was mountainous terrain at risk of floods and mudslides, fire risks due to the surrounding grasslands and mild local opposition. Ultimately, we and the financial backers correctly concluded the lands could not be commercially developed and we sold it for conservation and equestrian land use to recover the investment. In financing parlance, some projects have quote hair on them. It's not a surprise the Three Sisters lands have caused prior developments financial distress and receivership. Financing by lenders for the land will likely continue to be difficult because of all the reasons listed above and its financial history. Furthermore, with the widespread adoption of E S G investing criteria, that is, environment, social and governance, any future investor or lender involvement will be subject to greater scrutiny than ever before. All of this should be a concern to the town regarding any potential financial distress that may befall these development lands once again. We have too often seen when an extractive business or development comes under financial duress, local or other levels of government are left holding the bag. I recall listening to Mayor Borman being interviewed on Mountain FM one morning in connection with the sinkholes in Three Sisters and a cost that were being unfairly foisted upon the town. In the future, it's not just sinkhole exposure, but all other exposures to matters the town properly requires any developer to address through the process. And this can partially be mitigated with deposits and comprehensive long-dated performance bonding and insurance greater than the ten years, for example. Everything should be on the table, not negotiable. Thirdly, I would ask council to consider creative final solution to the decades-long story of the Three Sisters lands. Can you count how much time, energy? Town has spent the last few decades to settle the development. How many different proponents, legal agreements, development permits, meetings, revisions has the town had to deal with? Now is the time to consider solutions that even a few years ago you would never have thought possible. When advising boards and management on large changes they face, I suggest they broaden the perceived field of influence or rails of traditional thinking and doing. I have not once heard from a board or a management team, whether corporate or non-for-profit, that once through the period of change or crisis, they viewed such creative thinking as ill-conceived. It's been touched on briefly in these hearings and through the past several years in our community, the possibility that some of all of these Three Sisters lands can be donated or purchased for conservation. There are well-funded non-for-profit organizations that exist solely for this purpose. While such a process is out of the scope of these hearings, our community should consider facilitating this as a possible parallel solution amongst many others. I recall councillor Comfort said in response to one presentation last week, and I paraphrased, that we need a new way of thinking in this day and age. I couldn't agree more. And councillor McCollum over the past week has asked community members for creative ideas on how best to ensure individual responsibility, on how best to coexist with nature. In response, I say as a community and as protectors of our surroundings, we need to be willing to pay more money to educate and enforce rules driven by best practices. If this is important to us, we need to take more responsibility, both individually and collectively. For example, this past year, cross-country skiers funded and volunteered for a program to groom back country ski trails in K Country following provincial budget cuts. Perhaps a similar model can be adapted for front-country hiking around Canmore in partnership with local and provincial government. In summary of my three points, I ask that you consider the input provided by the independent, non-conflicted experts that these A S Ps, if approved, would bring harm to our community and its increasingly fragile wildlife. This is not responsible development. Second, please consider the town's financial liability exposure. These lands have been historically proven to carry higher financial risk and some of that risk can transfer to the town and its residents. And third, please consider your decisions or solutions in respect of the two A S A Ps that you may not have thought previously possible. Many thanks for allowing me and so many others to provide you with our input as you deliberate on our community's future. I yield my time back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kotey. I'm wondering if there are questions from members of council. And I see none, so thank you once again for joining in this morning and sharing your perspective with council.
Thank you.
This time I'll ask Steve Skiba to join in. If he can.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear me, Mr. Skiba? Doesn't appear that things are working there. I think... Hello?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is it, do I need to speak louder? Is that the case?
No, you're coming in 10-4.
Okay, all right. Before I begin, I just want to thank you all for your hard work and dedication to this community. You guys have a very difficult job, an unforgiving job, and I want to thank you for your patience, understanding, and leadership. I mean, you guys have been at this for a few days. It's awesome. My name is Steve Skiba and I'm the owner of North Star Contracting, which is a registered business in Canmore. I'm here today to show my support for the Three Sisters Mountain Village area structure plans. I have reviewed both ASPs and I believe they align with Canmore's municipal development plan and addresses many of the concerns raised by the community. As a contractor, I think it is also important to recognize the enormous economic opportunity that this project presents to the community. Construction alone will generate $165 million in gross domestic product and $95 million in labor income annually. It will also support an estimated 2,300 good-paying jobs helping an entire generation to live in the Bow Valley. I often hear a lot of concerns about how unaffordable it is to live in Canmore. This project not only provides a range of housing options for every income level, it will also help people to earn more money so they can buy a house. So often, the discussion around affordability is about how we can provide housing that is more affordable. But we fail to recognize that the best way to help people is to create good-paying jobs. I believe this project will do just that and help thousands of locals buy a house, send their kids to university, and help their parents in retirement. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and I trust that you'll make the right decision and approve this project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skiba. I'm looking to see if there's any questions for you from members of Council. But I see none at this time, so once again, thanks for taking the time to join in this morning.
Yeah, thanks for your time, you guys.
And this time I'll ask Erica Pataki to join in.
Hello, it's Erica Pataki. Hi, I'm just gonna read this. I'm not used to public speaking. And just don't mind the Chewbacca poster I had to borrow my head room because the internet connection in my office wasn't great today, so, okay. I'd like to start off by thanking you, Mr. Mayor Borrmann, and members of Town Council for all of your hard work. I really appreciate the time that you were taking to listen to our concerns. My name is Erica Pataki and I'm a permanent resident of Canmore. My husband and I moved here 15 years ago and we are very privileged to be able to raise our children here. I have reviewed both bylaws 2021-05, Three Sisters ASP, as well as bylaw 2021-06, the Smith Creek Area Structure Plan, and I'm opposed to both of them in their current form. I mirror the concerns of the majority of those who have spoken before me and I feel that I cannot support either of these area structure plans. My concerns include TSMV's lack of engagement with the people, the Stoney and Co. donation, significant undermining risks within the Three Sisters Area Structure Plan, the negative impact of the proposed development will have on the wildlife corridor in Canmore's climate change initiatives, and the sheer scale of the development. The expansion of Canmore's growth boundary will inevitably further impact traffic in the Bow Valley and place additional stress on our existing infrastructure. I will not speak directly to these issues as I feel they have been addressed with far more detail and expertise than I could ever offer. But for the record, I want to acknowledge that I feel that each of these concerns presents sufficient reason to reject TSMV's proposal. I would like to take this time to share my insights regarding the affordable housing, entry-level housing, and commercial development components within the ASPs. I will try to keep this brief. I will start off by addressing affordable and entry-level housing by distinguishing between the two. Affordable housing, as referred to in the ASP, includes affordable ownership and rental homes at below-market purchase prices and rental rates. I believe in Canmore, this is managed by CCH. Camera Community Housing is part of Vital Homes. I think that's formerly PH. Entry-level housing, on the other hand, is market-based. The goal of this type of housing is to provide options without any direct or indirect subsidies. There's no doubt that both of these forms of housing are required in Canmore, but in my opinion, the TSMV development plan does not meet Canmore's needs with respect to affordable housing and can in fact add to these issues in the long term. When you encourage population growth and expansion, you will inevitably increase the need for PH or affordable housing. It's like chasing a moving target. The ASPs provided address future affordable housing needs, but without any guarantees or clear commitment to a timeline. The developer provides a comprehensive overview of all the types of affordable housing options that they would like to see provided. However, regarding the implementation of this plan, there is very little information. The only commitment that I saw outlined in the ASP reflects an additional 100 rental units within Phase 3 and 100 units within Phase 5. Affordable housing option is an essential component of creating a diverse and sustainable community. The ASP does not address the short or even medium-term needs of the community. Although not clear, it may provide some long-term options, but it's important to note that population growth, which is encouraged by this plan, will also increase the need for a CCH-administered affordable housing. With respect to entry-level housing, it is suggested within the ASP that providing lower price points may be bet by encouraging different types of housing options with smaller floor plates and more modest finishes. This is a market-based model. Builders are free to develop their pricing model as they see fit, which often means maximizing profit. Listening to speakers, I've noted that there is sometimes this misconception that increased supply will lead to lower price points. This is not the case in Canmore, where supply has historically outpaced by demand. It is also important to note that builder pricing models are typically based on current market values. They also take in consideration building and land costs, which are a premium in Canmore. Builders will not create new supply if it's not profitable and we can see this reflected in the price points that are being offered by new construction. I mean, 600 to 700 square feet units, a new construction sell for over 500,000 and larger 1,000 square feet units for over 700,000. This is hardly affordable for entry-level buyers. Lastly, I would like to address the commercial component. This is where I see one of the biggest flaws to these proposed developments. Of the 15 years that I've lived in Canmore, 11 of these have been spent living in Three Sisters. In that time, the only commercial development supporting the community was Mountaineers Village, with relatively recent discussion regarding the gateway. While looking at the ASPs in larger municipalities such as Calgary, the commercial component forms an integral part of the plan. These communities are built to sustain a full-time residential base, which makes it viable for commercial developers to build a retail component. This model development has not been successful in Canmore in the past as a large percentage of new homes are sold to second-home buyers and sit empty for large portions of the year. As success within the commercial component ties in with the developer's commitment to provide employee housing, I think Town Council needs to address whether commercial development can even be supported on these lands. Finally, I'd like to express that I'm not anti-development. I do believe in sustainable growth that caters to the diverse needs of our community. I don't believe we need to rush forward. There are plenty of proposed new developments occurring in Canmore at this time with new supply emerging in both residential and commercial segments. These include, and I'm not sure limited to, the two new rental apartments being located along Canonaskis Way, Moose Meadows Commercial Development and the proposed One Industrial Place Development, continued development in Spring Creek, Three Sisters existing development, the Peaks Silver Tip and multifamily development on Seventh and Seventh, the proposed development on Lawrence Grassy Lead, an infill development within the town of Canmore. In addition, the most recent changes to Canmore's land use bylaw incorporate some creative solutions such as encouraging employee housing with commercial development. We have yet to see the full impacts of these ongoing developments and policy changes that they'll have on our community. They could potentially fill void in housing and commercial markets. TSMV's vision, as outlined in bylaws 2021-05 and 2021-06, do not align with Canmore's values and they have potential for far-reaching negative impacts on the future of Canmore and the surrounding environment. It's a risky proposal that is unacceptable in its current form. Please do not approve the bylaw set forth by TSMV. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pataki. Are there questions from members of Council for Erica? Seeing none, I thank you very much for taking the time to join in this morning and share your well-considered points.
Great, thank you.
This time I'm gonna call a short break. It's 10:21. Let's reassemble at 10:30. As it's 10:30, I will call the public hearing back to order and look to Mr. Daniel Rubner to join in.
Daniel has not joined the meeting yet, so we can move on to the next speaker.
Finian Backshaw, please join in.
Hello?
Oh, hello.
Good morning, Mayor Borrmann and members of Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. Thank you so much for letting me speak today. I feel very grateful. My name is Finian Backshaw. I turned 12 years old last week and I live in Canmore and go to Notre Dame French School, which is in Stewart Creek. I've done my best to read and listen to a lot of information about the TSMV area structure plans. We have discussed them in my class since our school is neighboring these lands. I have not read the ASPs in detail because they are very long. I would like to express my opinion to you, to the two proposals, my opposition, sorry. I feel very strongly about this subject and I would like to express my opinion to you. I think that the development that is... I think that the development that is proposed is a bad idea. Here's why. One of many reasons is our climate crisis. This is a terrible time to develop a practically new town. This would add to our ongoing climate crisis because of all the houses and cars that will pass through and emit a lot of carbon dioxide and other toxic gases, and will affect the air quality in a negative way. We should be doing everything we possibly can to reverse the climate crisis, not make it worse. Another reason is that they will be developing on undermined lands. It would not be a matter of if there will be sinkholes, it is a matter of when. Citizens of Canmore will be the ones paying for the reconstruction through taxes. I sure wouldn't want to live in a house that is built on undermined lands, and I wouldn't want anyone else to either. Another reason is that this development would be very harmful to the wildlife that use this land to live and travel. Adding lots of houses and people to this confined area would also create an increase in wildlife and human conflicts. We must respect the wildlife and give them the space they need and deserve. I'm also very concerned because I heard that the First Nations people have not really been consulted. These are Treaty VII lands, and from my point of view, that needs to be respected. I feel so very strongly about this subject that I decided to write an essay in school about this, explaining my reasons why I'm against it. I hope you will represent young people like me. I understand the need for additional and affordable housing, but to me, the solution does not lie within a massive development like this Three Sisters Mountain Village proposal. I know I'm just a kid, and these are complicated problems, but some ideas could be to build more affordable, smaller spaces, like tiny homes and apartments closer to the center of town so that people can use public transport or walk or ride a bike to get around. This is my generation's future, and to be completely honest, I'm scared for what it might look like. Not just my generation, but generations ahead too. I ask you to please act on behalf of the generations ahead and the citizens of Canmore and the wildlife and do what is right. I believe in you. Thank you so very much for your time and for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Bagshaw, for taking the time to join with council today and preparing such an impressive presentation. I really think you've done very well in putting this together and speaking to council. Are there any questions at this time for Mr. Bagshaw, for members of council? Council McCollum.
Hey, Finian. So I have a 12-year-old daughter, and I just wanted to say how humbling it is to hear that you believe in me, because I believe in you too.
Thank you.
And if there are no further questions for Mr. Bagshaw, thanks again for joining us today. I know that it's a little daunting to put yourself in front of a group like this, the Town Council, and speak to the issues. So good for you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I will ask Cindy Chipperzak to join in.
Hello, good morning.
Hello.
I can't believe I have to follow Fabian Bagshaw. You all have disappeared. Oh, you're back. My name is Cindy Chipperzak. I'm also known on Facebook as Cindy Heisler. Chipperzak is just my legal name. I have been a resident of Canmore for over 18 years. It's probably closer to 20 now. I foolishly during that time started a little Facebook group called the Bow Valley Home Finder. I had noticed that on the buy and sell pages, people were looking for a place to live and thought, well, maybe I could have a couple hundred people, and they would be able to quickly find a place. And the page, as of this morning, has 22,238 people. And I know some pages have a lot of people and no action. 17,000 members are active. I am approving this month and will right through till the end of May, if history holds, 25 new people a day looking for homes. There's a few that will be offering in the next bit, but really 25 people every day are going to look for homes. And those people, if I could just point out, are your children. I've got administration's children. I've got Spring Creek staff looking. I've got town of Canmore staff looking. So they're your children and your staff that are going to a middle-aged disabled woman's page who obviously has some sort of need for punishment to find a place to live. TSMV is the town's last chance to do something meaningful about affordable housing. TSMV is not about housing. It's about buildings. We don't need more buildings. We need more homes. And increasing the number of homes at TSMV, as it was put so well by Erica before me and Frank, it's not going to meet the needs of the thousands, literally. I think the statistic is 1,500 to 2,000 people every day who move here or here to work as a seasonal employee. There's very little staff accommodation in Canmore. And just the fact that there is a Facebook page as really arguably the only source for anyone moving to Canmore to find a place to live, that's sobering. When I've been updating the page over the years, when it hit 10,000 and people were saying, oh, congratulations, I said, no, I want it to be 400. I don't want there to be 20,000 people looking for a place to live. And TSMV will build a whole lot of buildings, but none of them are going to be for affordable housing. Not really, not when you look at it. CCHC is not meeting the needs of the community, as has been pointed out several times. Their mandate is to provide more homes to buy, which makes sense, and I agree. More people buying homes should free up rentals. But it's not enough. It's just not enough. There shouldn't be 22,000 people on my page. And my roommate's father was born here. So I'm a deep local, or I've been schooled as a deep, deep, deep local. I know it's complicated. I know housing is complicated. I know asking for cheap housing in Canmore's market of all things is complicated. I get it. I've heard it from everybody. But the lack of action on the town has to stop. You can't continually hide behind the MGA and say, well, it's just not possible. It's not possible. We can't do it. We're not authorized. Something has to give. We can't keep up at this pace. What are you going to do in a year when it's twice as many people coming to live here? There's no more houses built. TSMV will be tied up. So in 10 years, and increasing people in the TSMV area will just bring more people to town, so it really evens out, I would think. If half of the energy and effort and money that is going into the TSMV development, especially along the last two decades, if all of that had been put towards affordable housing, we wouldn't be here. It would have been well-used money. Finian Bagshaw kind of summed up everything else, and so many other people have addressed the issues brilliantly. I couldn't hope to do them justice. But I just want to point out that there is a Facebook page run by a disabled middle-aged woman that is responsible for housing the thousands of seasonal workers, minimum wage employees, and middle-income earners, which we're seeing more and more come to the valley, especially since COVID. This is it. The Bow Valley Home Finder is really it. I've reached out to everybody, all of the players over the years, Town of Canmore, CCHC, BVRH, and the major management companies, the property management companies, several times, and I've received responses from PICA. I've heard nothing back from CCHC. When I contacted them, I was told, and I'm quoting, "Seasonal employees aren't even on our radar." So if they're not on CCHC's radar, or CCH now, and if vital homes aren't aimed for seasonal workers or essential employees, minimum wage workers, who's looking out for the seasonal employees? And arguably, aren't they the most important people in town, really? We could live without a couple council members. We could live without a couple business people. But can we really live without a couple thousand employees? I'm done. I guess I'm angry, and I've had enough, and especially watching the last week. It's so blatantly obvious that TSMV won't really help affordable housing and continually raising the affordable housing flag to give bonusing, which is an option, from what I understand, for TCMV. They don't have to use that bonus. They could go with another bonus. There's no guarantee TCMV will have one single unit of affordable housing. There is no guarantee at all. So we approve this, and then what? CCHC is not meeting the needs. The town of Canmore needs to look at this seriously. I'm done. Everything's been said so many times. I'm done.
Thank you for being here then to share your opinion, ma'am. Are there questions for members of council for Ms. Heisler? Seeing that, again, thank you for taking the time to join in this morning.
Thank you very much.
This time, I will ask Murray Hannah to join in.
Okay, I think you can hear me now. No? You cannot hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, good. I just didn't want to talk to the wall. Well, thanks very much, Mayor Borrmun and councilors, for giving me the opportunity to speak here. My name is Murray Hannah. I'm a Canmore resident, a homeowner, and a taxpayer, and I have read the two ASPs in question, most of them. Joni Mitchell, the Canadian singer, has a song called "Big Yellow Taxi." If you don't know it, it starts with the words, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot with a pink hotel, a boutique, and a swinging hotspot." I fear that's what may happen, more or less, if the Three Sisters development is allowed to proceed. We're lucky to live here in paradise. People from around the world come to see and experience the beauty of our valley, the mountains, the trees, and if they're lucky, our animals. That will change if this paradise is paved. I want my town to take a firm position vis-à-vis wildlife corridors. The wildlife can't speak. I wonder what they would say if they came here to the meeting. I think they'd say, please give us a path wide enough so we can move through without fear. Those humans scare me. I guess the only people really speaking up for the animals are scientists who agree that there has to be a good path for the animals to move through here. Well, I'm concerned about the sheer size of the mountain village. Maybe you could call it a mountain town. Could increase to 5,500 people, I read, could be 10,000. That will change everything if that's allowed to occur. And many of those people will go downtown. I think their brief says that they'll be using transit. I don't think that'll be the case. So if they drive downtown, where will they park? Where will business people downtown work, park? Where will tourists park? It's gonna be a mess. So I'll leave that for you to think about the impact. And of course, I was going to say the great unknown is undermining, but it is the great known. And no one can say that collapses won't happen. It's already happened, and there will be more collapses. The town has the expense of the dirt gas hole. And so who picks up the tab when the developers are long gone? It will be me and you taxpayers. I think undermining could be the Canmore version of the orphan well. Just walk away from the mess. So I think all things considered, the risk of the development going ahead is not balanced by what the town might gain. The two area structure plan presentations are glitzy, glossy packages, put together by slick, creative writers. Reading the ASPs, I lost count of the number of times the words "should" and "could" were used. Those are wiggle word, weasel words, not definite commitments. So we really have to be very cautious. And you guys already know it, but you are in the driver's seat, and you do not have to adopt these ASPs as they're written. Time is on our side. If you vote to accept the plans as is, the landscape of the valley will be changed forever. It'll be the biggest change in the valley and will remain such until the next ice age clears out the whole mess. Anyhow, I started with Joni Mitchell's words, and I'm going to finish with her last three lines. And I'll save you the torment of me singing them. It goes, "Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you got till it's gone? They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." Thanks very much. It must be a real ordeal for you to listen to all of us sawdust. And I would like to thank the town administration for organizing this. What a chore that must be. So the ball's in your court, folks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Hannah. Are there any questions of members of council for Mr. Hannah? Seeing that, again, thanks for joining in today.
Thank you for your time.
And at this time, I would ask Glenna Scarran to join in.
Good morning, Mayor Borrmun and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. In the spirit of reconciliation, I acknowledge that we are virtually together here in Treaty VII territory, traditional lands of the Stony Nakota nations, that is Bear Spaw, Chiniki, and Wesley nations, as well as the Blackfoot Confederacy and Susina Nation and the Meti Region 3. I am a full-time resident and homeowner here in Canmore, and I have reviewed the ASPs that are the subject of this hearing, as well as many related reports and documents. It's my understanding that TSMV was asked to submit the two area structure plans in concert if they wanted to submit an application. And for myself, I thought that was a really good idea because it would give council and Canmore residents a holistic view of the proposed developments. And as we've seen this week, now you've got the far-reaching view of the scale of the potential developments in front of you. And the result appears to have justifiably shocked members of the Canmore public into an unprecedented degree of interest, concern, and engagement. I submitted a letter outlining my own concerns about the proposals and indicating that I am opposed to both Bylaw 2021-05 and Bylaw 2021-06. Now, I used to encourage my children to express what they wanted and not what they didn't like about whatever was under discussion. So I asked myself, how is it possible to go forward? So I asked myself, how is it possible to go forward? And I have a three-point suggestion for you. The first one is that I ask that you please reject the current proposed ASPs. The second one is that you facilitate a visioning process. Now, Mayor Borlam, you have referred in these proceedings to the 2016 to 2018 rewrite of the municipal development plan as the engagement process that establishes the vision for the town. But having reviewed the ASPs, and having spent the past week glued to my computer screen and listening to the hearing, it seems to me that there is a disconnect. I feel that we need a renewed vision to guide us in the current environment of a climate emergency with social equity and sustainability issues, and affordable housing challenges in what is now labeled a crisis eco-region. The energy intellect and ideas that we've seen during the hearing could be engaged to update both Mining the Future and the Municipal Development Plan, so that there is a shared and robust vision of the town that reflects our current reality. This would have to include meaningful input from our Stony Nakota neighbors and other traditional users of these lands. And it would have to be tested with a broad and inclusive range of those who work and/or live in Canmore. And ideally, this process could involve and maybe even get some traction with provincial politicians to help establish the special needs of this region. And just as a side note, the MDP itself in Section 18.4.3 indicates that there should be a five-year review process for the NDP, so it is unbelievably just about time for that. And the Mining the Future report also recognizes the need to continue conversations about the vision for Canmore, to revisit it, and to include citizens in the process. And then the final suggestion in that three points to go forward are that should the landowners want to revise and resubmit ASPs for this land, then encourage them to do better and to reflect the many ideas that have been expressed by so many articulate and knowledgeable people who make their home in the valley. To change gears just a little bit, here are some process suggestions for future applications. First of all, they should comply with all aspects of the municipal development plan, including the growth boundary, the conservation of wildlands, zoning, and the 20% target for non-market affordable homes. I'd like to see a policy established to prohibit building on or adjacent to undermined lands, especially those that have been flagged as the red zone or zone five in that map eight of the Three Sisters Village ASP. And I would ask that you don't accept those lands as municipal reserve or build municipal infrastructure on them. Heard suggestions about a precautionary approach, and I support that. Since by definition, it isn't possible to undo irreversible change, any development, I think, should start small and in areas with less risk. There is no rush to build out our town, and it's important to do things right. I'd like to see us turn adaptive management on its head by taking small steps and confirming that predicted benefits to the community have been achieved, and that risk mitigation measures have been successful before we take the next step. In support of that, managing phasing, as phasing's been suggested in the ASP, with development performance milestones that explicitly track commercial development and the rollout of affordable housing options. Ensure that each phase is subject to updated studies, including socioeconomic, environmental, fire safety, and transportation studies, if they're required, given the very long time scales that are involved. We've seen how quickly the world can change, and I know that developers are looking for certainty, but that's a luxury that none of us realistically has. Just look at how COVID-19 has turned our world upside down. Finally, I'd ask that landowners be required to steward their commitments to the Development Authority on an annual basis, or before submitting any applications for amendment or further development. And that stewardship should include all of the relevant commitments, those upon which the NRCB relied in their landmark decision, those made in applications and consultation towards the ASP, and those made in any future discussions for conceptual plans and development plan bylaws. Transparency of this stewardship, that is availability of the data to the public, is also important. So to conclude, I think this public hearing process has been remarkable, as so many citizens have been able to express their fact-based and their heartfelt responses to the proposed ASPs. I was a bit taken aback yesterday when I saw that my name was the final one on the speaking roster for members of the public. That's changed by today, but in any case, it's you who have the final word, and I hope that you will use it to integrate and amplify the voices of all of us who care about Canmore. I hope that you'll continue the momentum of this public hearing and take the necessary steps to protect this very special town, its land, and its non-human and its human neighbors, visitors, and residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scarnan. Are there questions from Ms. Scarnan, from members of council this time? Seeing none, I thank you again for joining in and sharing your perspective with council today.
Thank you.
And at this time, I would ask David Taylor to join in. As many will know, Mr. Taylor is one of the principal owners of Three Sisters Mountain Village. And in the interest of procedural fairness, we will allow Mr. Taylor to speak for 10 minutes at this public hearing, as we have permitted all who have asked. I'll ask Mr. Taylor that he not simply refute what has been said by others, nor to answer questions at this time, as there will be an opportunity next week, but simply speak to what he sees as the merits of the area's structure plan applications. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Borlam. Good morning, council. As Mayor Borlam has said, my name is David Taylor, and I'm the president of Three Sisters Mountain Village. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and be part of this public hearing. In the spirit of reconciliation, I want to acknowledge we are on traditional lands of the Treaty VII territory. I acknowledge the past, present, and future generations of Stony Nakota, Blackfoot, Tucina nations who helped us steward this land, as well as honor and celebrate this place. I respect all those who have come forward to participate in this process, especially those who have worked hard to understand both area structure plans in their entirety. I do also want to acknowledge the fears we have heard about future development in Canmore. I know these fears are real for some members of the community. I'm a proud businessman, born and raised in Calgary. And growing up, my parents preached the virtues of hard work, and above all else, integrity, honesty, and doing the right, things the right way. In addition to my role as president of TSMV, I run several companies, including North America's largest custom HVAC equipment manufacturing company, and several companies in Canmore. I have a lot of pride in our companies and their ability to provide long-term careers to our 2,500 employees, some of whom have been with us for over 40 years. Giving back to communities where we work and where our employees live has always been important to my family. Due to hard work, our family has been proud to make significant donations to projects under four pillars: education, healthcare, arts, and history. As well, we annually support a diverse group of charities throughout Alberta. Locally, we're proud to support groups like Art Place, Rotary, and Canva, as well as many festivals and charities that enrich the quality of life in Canmore. I too love Canmore, and have long recognized that it is a special place. We all have our own unique personal connection to it. Our family and Canmore resident Blair Richardson have owned Three Sisters on two occasions. Under our control, Three Sisters has never been bankrupt. I will be honest, that it has been difficult to listen over the past few days to so many people who have labeled us as greedy developers and portrayed us as speculators. And yet, here I am, feeling the need to defend myself, my family, the team of industry-leading experts who helped prepare our application, and Town of Canmore staff who have helped guide us through the process to ensure that the ASPs adhere to their policy framework. It has been difficult to hear so many speakers reference our private-owned land as their desire to keep using it for their own personal enjoyment and recreation. You wouldn't build trails on your neighbor's yard, ride your bike daily across their lawn, or let your dogs run off leash there. Yet some feel a profound sense of entitlement over our property. I want to be clear, we fully understand stewardship. However, that is not the same as ownership and respect for private property. Our ASPs provide legitimate and extensive public-accessible recreation areas. Without these, the ongoing use of private property for public use remains quite simply trespassing. So we don't believe that that status quo is a solution. I would like to say a few words about engagement. Many speakers called for more time, suggesting engagement wasn't done. We initiated a significant communication engagement plan and sought the town's input and obtained council's acceptance. In fact, we spent five years working to redefine these ASPs with input from the community. After our previous ASP was not supported by council in 2017, we have listened, we have learned through the process, and we have worked to be transparent, showing how we have changed our draft plans to reflect input from those who did share their point of view with us. We have heard clear, we have been clear where we could make changes due to provincial authority. Or, sorry, we have been clear where we couldn't make changes due to provincial authority. A random sample survey of the complete community in late October 2020 confirmed almost 80% of the community was aware of TSMV's plans. The result also confirmed those who knew the least about the plans were the most opposed to them. This statistically valid study by Adventist also highlighted that this community is divided. Forty-six percent opposed plans, 35% supported plans, and 16% were neutral, meaning they neither opposed nor supported the plans. We have long known that there is a silent middle in Canmore. I'm not surprised more people haven't come forward to support these plans. You just have to look at Facebook and the chat during this hearing to understand why. I personally have heard from many locals who have said they support the plans, but were concerned about the backlash they could face if they stepped forward. In fact, watching the chat, I noticed that almost all opposed speakers received gratitude from those listening, yet anyone who spoke out in support had their personal interest questioned, sometimes requiring the town to moderate. Members of my team have felt threatened by personal messages they have received from citizens of this community. They have had their professional ethics questioned. This continues to be a polarizing discussion, setting folks up to be right or wrong. In some cases, I have seen a complete unwillingness to discuss merits of the plan and how they are aligned with the town's own long-range planning framework. Many speakers over the last few days have explicitly said that TSMV isn't respecting council direction. However, this is not the case. Our work is highly informed and reflective of council direction in the town's municipal development plan, integrated transportation plan, and many other town policies. Council heard from many citizens when they amended the Canmore's municipal development plans in 2017, 2018, and 2020. The municipal development plan provides current council direction based on citizen input and is rooted in the Mining the Future, as expressed in the MDP's foundational values. It gave TSMV a clear roadmap for our work as council requested. Our team has made it a priority to collaborate. We have worked with the Town of Canmore to understand what was needed from this development and how to benefit the community. We have proposed more affordable housing than any other development, and more employee housing. We have worked with ecologists and biologists to build a plan to address human-wildlife coexistence. We've set aside 60% of our lands for this purpose, that's roughly 1,500 acres. We have been innovative in our approach to environmentally sensitive design, exceeding in many ways what is required of us. And yes, we did ask for an extension to the urban boundary growth to offer more light industrial and commercial land uses to support economic diversity in the town, and make another safe transportation connection to the Trans-Canada Highway. The MDP allows for these things. Before I close, I want to say something about the Stony Nakota Nation with regards to indigenous consultation. We contacted Stony Nakota Nation in 2020 to make sure they were aware of the proposals. We also know the town staff circulated the plans to the Stony Nakota Nation. TSMV remains the only development in Canmore that does have input considered from the Stony Nakota Nation through their participation in the 1992 NRCB decision process. We do know there's more work to be done to complete the consultation with the Stony Nakota Nation, and we look forward to the town providing direction on this. ASPs are very high-level plans. Several people spoke that the plans are too big and too much. However, we don't believe that all speakers understand that ASPs provide a long-term guide for the town and for the developer. In the future, each land use application will be at a much smaller scale. Adjustments will be made as time goes on, based on future input and council direction. And finally, we have done this work with the best of intentions and in accordance with the guiding principles and strategies of the Town of Canmore. My commitment has always been to develop new neighborhoods that will help Canmore meet its future needs.
Excuse me, Mr. Taylor, this is your nine-minute time check.
Thank you. All of you know that this land has been anticipated for development for a very long time. Even 1998, it was recognized that Smith Creek would see development after a wildlife corridor was set. TSMV has no intention of walking away from this project. We work closely with the town administration to develop a very detailed terms of reference for both the ASPs that this council reviewed and approved. We followed the legislative procedure to deliver ASPs that reflect council's direction to us. Council must now apply the facts and their legislative toolkit and purview to the application and render a decision. We recognize this will be a challenge. You have heard passionate opposition. Fortunately, not all community members are aware of the applicable tools and limits placed on municipal governments. Thank you for hearing my perspective. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to respond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. As I noted earlier, there will be an opportunity for TSMV to respond to questions of council later on in the public hearing. So, thank you for being here today and sharing your perspective on the ASPs.
I thank you, the council, for sitting through the last six days of hearings. I know what it's like sitting on Zoom for long periods of time. It's very, very draining. So, I commend you on the way you handle.
Thank you, and it has been. At this time, I'll be calling a recess in the public hearing until we reconvene to hear the rest of the agenda items, including questions from members of council for both the applicant and for closing comments from administration, which is on the agenda for next Tuesday. So, we'll see you all then.